If I can remind you one more time, if we have scouts here this evening working for merit badges, therefore citizenship requirement for an advancement, we've got a sign up roster in the middle of the room. We'd ask you to please put your name and your troop number on that sign up roster, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this is American Fork City Council for August 23rd of 2016. Our meeting this evening has been noticed on the state's website as required by state law, and we posted it conspicuously throughout the community in three different locations. We will follow the agenda as outlined this evening. We'd like to begin this evening with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a prayer offered by Councilman Rob Shelton, after which I will conduct a roll call. Would the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to be gathered together this evening as elected officials and as staff as well as citizens. We're thankful, Father, for the tremendous blessing that it is to live in such a wonderful country where freedom and liberty is recognized. We're grateful, Father, for the courageous men and women who defend our freedom, and for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice that we may be able to enjoy such freedoms. We're thankful, Father, for the responsibility which is ours to be able to work together as we are entrusted with governing the affairs of the community. We pray, Father, thy Spirit will be with us this evening, that we may be able to conduct business in a temperament that would be pleasing unto thee. We pray, Father, that we may be able to be inspired and be able to strive to fulfill our responsibilities to the best of our capabilities, and these things we ask and pray for, in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. I will now conduct a roll call. Councilman Barnes.
Here.
Councilman Bowen.
Frost.
Councilman Frost.
Here.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Councilman Shorter.
Here.
We have a quorum and can conduct the business of the city. At this time, I know we have several young men that are here for scouting purposes, for merit badges, or for a citizenship advancement, rank advancement. We'd like you to come forward at this time. Bend the microphone backwards so you're facing the audience and tell us your name, your rank, your troop number, and who your scout leader is, please. Gentlemen, come forward at this time, please. Sounds like my back, doesn't it?
Liam Troop Eight Two Nine.
And your name?
Liam Coen, Troop Eight Two Nine.
And your rank?
Life.
And your scout master?
Brother Garrett.
Thank you.
Spencer Bellon, Troop Eight Two Nine, Lynn Garrett, is my scout master, and I am a life.
Thank you.
Michael Heaney, Troop Eight Two Nine, I'm Lynn Garrett, and I'm a life.
Thank you.
I'm Gage Farley, I'm in Troop Eight Two Nine, I'm a tender flight, and my scout master is Brother Garrett.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Garrett, I am in Troop Eight Two Nine, I am a life, and my scout master is Lynn Garrett.
Thank you.
I'm Joseph Thomas, and my scout master is Lynn Garrett. My troop is Troop Eight Two Nine, and I'm a life.
Thank you. Any more? You late comers, are you scouts? Have you signed in? Come and tell us your name and your troop, your rank, and your scout leader, please. Don't make me beg. I have a police chief back there that can take care of that for me.
My name is Spencer Corey. What else did I have to say?
Troop number?
All right, we're from Troop Eight One Eight.
Thank you. And your scout leader?
Rusty Belknap.
And your rank?
Life.
Thank you.
My name is Corbin Beagley, and I am a star, and my scout leader is Rusty Belknap.
Okay, your troop number?
Eight One Eight.
Thank you.
I'm Wyatt Morene, and I'm Troop Eight One Eight, and my leader's Rusty Belknap, and I'm a first class.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Edwards, I'm from Troop Eight One Eight, my leader's Rusty Belknap, and I'm a first class.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen. If your scout leader or your merit badge counselor needs to know of your attendance this evening, you can pull up American Fork City's website, look at tonight's meeting minutes, and you will find your name and your troop number in the minutes of the meeting. We wish you well as you go along scouting trail, and for you life scouts, when it comes time to discuss a Eagle project, there's many things that you can do for American Fork that would help you and would help our community as you look for that Eagle project. Again, we wish you well, and thanks for your attendance this evening. It's now that time in our meeting where we set aside some time every meeting for public comments. I would ask if anyone has public comments, we had received one from Anna Dean Marshall, and she would like to address the council and make us aware of Tabitha's Way. Anna Dean, please. You can bend the microphone back now.
Sorry about your back. I'm honored to be here before the American Fork City Council. Thank you for this time. My name's Anna Dean Marshall, and I'm the pantry manager for American Fork for Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantry, North County. Tabitha's Way started about six years ago in Spanish Fork. Wendy Bangader started the food pantry, and it has been running strong and giving, serving food to, offering a free food pantry market to clients for about 5,000 clients per month. We expect to be, even exceed those numbers here in American Fork. North Utah County has needed a food pantry, and Utah Food Bank is our partner, and they're very excited, along with Feeding America. We are taking on the clients that have been attending the Adventure Church pantry, and also today was the last day for the PG Mobile Food pantry, and we were there, and we are welcoming those clients to us. So, we're just excited. We are having a ribbon cutting and grand opening August 30th at 10:00 a.m., and I think, Mayor, you had been speaking to Wendy about speaking in that, and so we're just very grateful for the support from American Fork. We're excited to have it in our city, and I have a little cart, little flyers here for anybody who has needs. Also, we have many volunteer opportunities. This is a wonderful opportunity for our local community to get together as a group and share in volunteer opportunities to serve those in need.
Thank you. For those interested, no, this is on East State Road in the building that, if you're as old my age, it was the old Reams. Most recently, it's been Covenant Recordings, and they have Suite Three, and that will be where the Tabitha's Way pantry will be. Thank you for your attendance this evening. We appreciate your willingness to help us. We're happy to have you in town.
Thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the mayor, the council, the senior staff, have comments? Nancy, please stand up. Tell us your name, please.
I'm Nancy Lee Belt. I've lived here for most of my life, and I come here because I'm seeking some counsel here. I have a problem with my, their, my neighbor is putting in a ditch, covering the irrigation ditch, and I've been working with Ernie Johns on it. And the problem is, when they cover the ditch on my part, they put in a bunch of slag, and they put in one piece before, and all the slag comes on my property, and it comes to the ditch, and it goes into the ditch and feeds the water. We've cleaned it out several times, but they actually pulled the pipe out, and you can see the slag in there. The pipe's been in there for approximately two years, and it's that deep in slag. So, as time goes by, it's going to be a real problem. They've covered it for about 200 feet, and so I'm concerned with the slag coming in. So, I've called around, I've talked to TJ with the city and asked what he recommends, and he's saying that he recommends that they put cement on the banks coming up so that the slag won't come into my property and come down into the ditch. I also called the Utah County Roads Department and asked them what they would recommend in this situation, and they said definitely it should be cemented up to the top, and where the slag is, he said about two inch lip so that the slag doesn't come up and over. And so, I, you know, you guys probably not interested in this, but it is a problem for me, and I'm just seeking guidance as to where I can go to get a resolution or what I should do.
That dealer, that auto dealer, has a bond in place, and that bond has been released, so there's no, we have no bond money to take care of that on his side. The question is, what are you willing to spend to correct the problem?
Well, I have to, not a whole lot. If I had the money, I would spend it, but I don't, so.
Mr. Rojas, are you here this evening representing Public Works?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you ask Dale to visit with Ms. Lee Belt, see what we can do to correct this problem? She lives on 200 South and, what is it, Nancy, 480 East?
468.
Okay. 468 East, 200 South. Have Dale visit with her and see what the recommendations are, what the city can do. When we built Auto World down there, and they put slag underneath their asphalt, and it's falling into the irrigation ditch.
And on top of that, they built a bridge, like, and that's my main problem right now tonight, and they're in the process of working it, so thank you very much.
Let's see what we can do to correct it. Dan, please. Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions or comments for the council, the senior staff, or the mayor this evening? 468 East, 200 South.
I just had a question for Nancy. Are you opposed to your ditch being enclosed also with a pipe?
Well, I, yes. And the reason why is because, well, yeah, because it's cemented all the way up to about 10 feet, which adjoins the dealer world. And the reason I don't want it closed is because we use it as a drainage. We water the field, and it goes down to the end by dealer world, and then it comes down back into the ditch. That's why, yeah. Okay, thank you.
With no further comments, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will receive the city administrator's report. Mr. Whitehead. Thank you. City Council reports concerning committee assignments. Councilman Barnes.
Nothing to report this evening.
Councilman Bowen.
Actually have nothing to report this evening also, although I do want to welcome the Tabitha's Way. We're glad that you're here and offering that service. I think that's great.
Thank you. Councilman Frost.
Been busy, but I really don't have anything to really report here tonight, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Shelton.
Just quickly, we'll notice on the bills for payment tonight, a check to be paid out to City of Fund Carnival. This is for Steel Days, and we got the final numbers in, and there were approximately 70,000 tickets sold for the carnival. What's interesting is that the biggest supplier, I guess, or places where people went to go pick up those tickets, is about 30,000 were sold at Fresh Market alone. So, people getting groceries and carnival tickets at the same time. It's great because what that means is that we get to split those proceeds, and that helps out with our costs for covering Steel Days, it's in about $34,000. So, it helps us to be able to keep things affordable as we do our city celebration. The other thing I had to mention is I had a great meeting with the, my fellow council counterparts in Pleasant Grove and Linden that are also over the Chamber of Commerce. We got together just to brainstorm about ways we could look at building some economies of scale and working together. Most businesses don't recognize city limits, and they love to do business across city limits, and how we can try to be able to encourage that. They're already doing four events a year that are combined to try to increase that awareness of other businesses in different communities, and that was very, very productive. And one of those chamber events that they did together and jointly was recently held where Jason Chaffetz, our congressman, came and spoke. It was very well attended. It was great to get an update on what's going on in Washington, particularly in the business world, and a lot of business leaders appreciated that update. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Shorter.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. From the mayor's report, I too was going to talk about Tabitha's Way. It's interesting that Mr. Shelton makes a comment about businesses. We have one in American Fork that's called Beyond Glaze, and it's out in the vicinity of Costco, and because Costco's in Lehigh, they thought they were in Leho, Lehigh, and they joined the Lehigh Chamber. I thanked them for being in American Fork. When the mayor and Ms. Lehigh, or Ms. American Fork shows up for the ribbon cutting, I assured them that their water and their sewer was handled in American Fork, and we really appreciated their sales tax. They can give all the whores to Lehigh they want, but the sales tax comes our way. It's good to know that we have got our tax reports for June, and we are appreciably higher than we were a year ago. We continue to expand on our sales tax, and that's the main source of income from our city that allows us to maintain the quality of life in our city without raising taxes. And so, I appreciate the businesses in American Fork and all that they do for the welfare of our citizens. This concludes the mayor's report. We'll move on to the common consent agenda. Common consent agenda this evening is the approval of the August 4, 2016 work session minutes, and approval of the August 9, 2016 city council minutes. Terry Lynn, our recorder, have you had any changes to those minutes presented? All right, thank you. Item three is approval for city bills for payment and purchase requests over 25,000. Item four, review and approval of a progress release in the performance guarantee bond in the amount of 420,034.38 for the Green Springs subdivision located at 150 Northwest State Road. Item five, approval of a progress release for the performance guarantee bond in the amount of 700,736.73 for the American Fork Apartment Subdivision located at 740 East and 320 South. And item six, approval of a progress release for the performance guarantee bond in the amount of 70,464.84 for Roberts Roost Twin Home Subdivision located at 190 West, 350 South. Is there a motion to approve the common consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I would ask the council to use your tablets to vote, please. Are you on yet?
Yes, it works.
Okay. Very good. The common consent is approved. Item one on our action agenda this evening, review and action on a resolution declaring three police cars to be surplus. These three police vehicles include a 2008 Dodge Charger with 94,257, and I think we're on our fifth transmission on that car, Chief. We have a 2008 Dodge Charger with 109,501. It's got about the same story, and the third vehicle's a 2001 Ford Crown Victoria with 129,700 miles. These have all made it to the point that they are beyond the economic amount we put into them every year to repair them, and so we would like to declare an excess of disposal. Any questions on this item?
May I move to adopt a resolution declaring certain items to be surplus?
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Shelton. Any questions on this one? Counsel, will you please use your tablets to vote? Motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item two, review and action on a resolution approving a land use map amendment from the residential low density to the professional office designation for property located at 300 North and 1100 East. I will state for the benefit of our audience this evening, when the county and the city collaborated in widening of our 11th East, now known as North County Boulevard, there were certain properties that were purchased by the county in order to eliminate the homes to widen the road. There wasn't a home on this piece, but it was a fairly large parcel of pasture, and there's now a buyer from this, from the county, and they want to put that in a professional office zone. As you can see, it's very close to the professional office zone. There's also a piece diagonally across the street on the corner that fits that same mold. It's interesting that as the Intermountain Healthcare continues to expand their footprint of the American Fork Hospital, those ancillary businesses that feed off the hospital continue to need office space or want office space in close proximity. So, with that in mind, that's the background, that's the piece of property in question. I'm told by the planning department that it received favorable consideration by the planning commission, and it's before us this evening for action. Any questions on this item?
So, this is just the northwest parcel there on that corner?
The northwest corner, yes, sir.
Is there anything on the southwest that you guys are looking at as well?
With North County Boulevard and two lanes and the divided highway, you know, it's really hard to consider that to be residential when in fact it's better, best use would be something of this, of this particular nature.
Mayor, I'd move to adopt the resolution approving a land use map amendment for the residential low density to the professional office designation located at 300 North, 1100 East, with the condition that the resolution be made effective upon approval of a commercial site plan for the project.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter, seconded by Councilman Bowen. Any questions on this motion?
I just had a comment, Mayor. I agree with you and the planning commission and the planner that this is a good use for this property. It's, I read the letter from the showies, and I appreciate them doing that, but really, this land, it doesn't make sense for it to be residential. It's on a busy intersection. Professional office does make a lot of sense. I mean, kitty corner from that and down one lot is a dental office, and then next to that is the hospital, and so I think this is a good use for this, and I'm supportive of the change to both the land use plan and the zoning change itself.
Thank you for those comments. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. I would ask you to vote using your tablets, please. Again, motion is unanimous. Item three, review and action on an ordinance approving a zone map amendment for the same piece of property from the R1 12,000 residential zone to the PO1 professional office zone located at 300 North and 1100 East.
Mayor, if there are no questions, I would, I would move to adopt the ordinance approving a zone map amendment from the R1 12,000 residential zone to the PO1 professional office zone located at 300 North, 1100 East, with the condition that the ordinance will be made effective upon approval of a commercial site plan for the project.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Bowen. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, Counsel, would you use your tablets to vote, please? Again, it's unanimous. Thank you. Item four, review and action on subdivisions, commercial projects, condominiums, and planned unit developments, including one, plant approval; two, method of satisfaction of water rights requirements; three, posting of an improvement bond or setting of a timeframe for improvement installation; and four, authorization to sign the final plat and acceptance of all dedications to the public and to have the plat recorded. We have two such projects this evening. A, review and action on an ordinance approving an amended commercial site plan for standard plumbing to enlarge an outdoor storage area located at 552 East, 620 South, in the GC planned commercial zone. This is standard plumbing. They've been in that building, used to be Office Max, I believe, and they've been there for some time. They find that they need to increase their outside storage because of the amount of materials they're putting through that store, and this site plan will allow them to do that. This, too, received favorable consideration with the planning commission, and it's for us tonight for our approval.
Mayor, I motion, I motion to adopt the ordinance approving a commercial site plan for standard plumbing to enlarge an outdoor storage area located at 552 East, 620 South, in the GC two planned commercial zone, with instructions to the city recorder, somewhere on here, it keeps jumping around. The city recorder withhold publication. The ordinance is subject to all conditions identified in the public record associated with the August 3, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Shelton. Any questions on this motion?
Little discussion, just quickly, Mayor. In reading the minutes and in talking to some of the planning commission members, there is some concern about their trucks and whether they're going to be able to properly unload those because of where the gate is and because of that corner and everything else. I think that's just, we just need to understand that potentially is a problem for them that they're going to have to deal with. I don't think we need to be concerned with it, but potentially it could cause a little maybe traffic problems in that area.
Well, as I recall, that's fed off of our Utah Valley Drive, which would ultimately be 600 East, and that is a divided road with the planter in the middle, so it's coming off of 620 South, no, it's coming off of 600 East, isn't it? All right. And across the road from there, we have the Harrington Hollow subdivision, so.
Right, and the subdivisions there, just, there's a potential little problem there with big trucks, if they use big trucks once they get on.
Do you want to address that, Adam? What was the planning commission's discussion on that?
The discussion was actually the entrance from the parking lot. They just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't impede traffic, and then the engineer was able to illustrate that where the drive aisle to the yard will be is pretty much directly across from an existing drive aisle, so they'd be able to pull forward and back.
All right.
So there wasn't much of a concern.
Well, the truck driver that's got a 24-foot gate to hit, he's not much of a driver if he can't hit an eight-foot trailer in a 24-foot gate, so, you know, and that still leaves him eight feet on each side of his trailer, so. I have a motion in a second. Counsel, would you please vote using your tablets, please? Again, it's unanimous. Item B, review and action on an ordinance approving a commercial site plan for the Roderick North Point Lot 2A Office Warehouse located at 1226 South, 630 East in the PI-1 Planned Industrial Zone. As you know, on our 1100 South or Sam White Lane, Roderick has got a large office warehouse building, and this building is on the property to the rear of that, and that is serviced off of the cul-de-sac that comes in off of our, is it 580 East, Adam? Anyway, it is a second office building. It's the same type of material as his first one was built, only this one will have something like five suites in it instead of a larger number like we had on the original one.
Mayor, I'll motion to adopt the ordinance approving the commercial site plan for the Roderick North Point Lot 2A Office Warehouse located at 1226 South, 630 East in the PI-1 Planned Industrial Zone, with instructions to the city recorder withhold publication of the ordinance, subject to all conditions identified in the public record associated with the August 17, 2016 planning commission meeting.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Shorter. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I would ask the council to use your tablets to vote, please. Motion is unanimous, thank you very much. Item five, review and action on a resolution approving an agreement with Zion's Bank, public finance for a six-year lease purchase of two 2016 ambulances. This is something that was approved in the budget for the 2016 year, and we are now getting around to the agreement with Zion's Bank, and this is the actual conduct of that agreement. Anything you'd like to add with that, Chief Garcia?
No, sir. No questions.
All right. Any questions on this item, counsel?
I had just a question or two. Are these in addition to the current ambulances, or are they replacing the current ambulances?
These are the two new ones that are being built now. They will replace two of our older ones. The two that are in service now will then go to the backup, and these two will come up.
So we'll keep the other two, but just kind of as backup, and these will become the primary?
We'll get rid of two or three of the older ones that we have now, yes.
And then my other question was, why two at once versus just one at a time?
We bought the first two new ones that we have now because we were out of ambulances. It was necessary to get the two. We were, we had, the only ambulance that we had in service at one time was one on the back of a wrecking truck, and that's the only one we had. The council then decided to buy two of them to put us back into stead, and with that, those both run out at about the same time. They both have over 100,000 miles, their dependability's going down, and so it's time to get them out of the going every time, every day, and putting the two new ones in their place.
Okay, and then I guess my next question would be for Mr. Whitehead. What was the rationale for doing the lease versus just purchasing these?
On the dollar, that's just how we play with the package. Since I've been here, we've got new ones, before I came here, it was two, so it's just a matter of money.
Our payment never, we always were paying the same amount of payment for the last five years, that payment ran out, we just continued it with the other five years to continue the same payment.
I mean, granted, interest rates are low, but on a half million dollars, it's still, you know, 33,000 a year, I think. Anyway, I was just curious, I'd be more supportive of just purchasing them outright, I'm not so.
We'll do that for the fire engine next year.
The really big ticket. Okay, thanks. What happens at the end of the five-year lease? Do we have an option to buy?
We own them. We're just leasing.
So this is a lease purchase?
This isn't like, this is a lease purchase, this is just a payment that we're making over them, yes, sir.
I will say this, on behalf of the fire department and our EMTs, our first responders, with the hospital located in American Fork and our first responders having the qualifications to offer critical care and the number of transports that we have to other facilities, whether it's going south to Utah Valley or north to the mothership in Murray, or Primary Children's Hospital at University of Utah, those transports, we make money transporting people in the ambulances, and the fire department is one agency that operates in the black, and I think we owe them a debt of gratitude for working the way they can. Large capital outlay puts a burden on our cash flows, and if we're able to do this and handle this over a yearly payment for a period of five years, then we can budget that and work for that, and it continue to go. So this is a way that many of the cities are now going, and it's because they've seen the success that our cities had in doing it, and it's been successful, so I will leave it at that. Item five.
Mayor, I'd just like to add a comment. As a beneficiary of that, a little over a year and a half ago, my father was transported a couple of times by them, and they do a great job, Chief, they do a very professional job, they're friendly, but they're professional, and they treated him with respect, which not all people give 93-year-old gentlemen, but they did a great job, and we were just grateful they were there, and he was, in fact, transported from here to Utah Valley, so we appreciated that, and they took good care of him, so.
Well, I'll echo to Mayor my support for the fire department itself and the role and mission that they carry out, and them having the right equipment, so I hope they don't interpret my opposition to the borrowing and the interest and stuff like that as opposition to their department, because that's not accurate at all, I'm very supportive of them.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting an agreement between the American Fork City and Zion's Bank, public finance for the financing of two ambulances, and I'd like to also echo your comments, that a study done two years ago showed that our department had the lowest, I think, Chief, cost per call than any other agency around here, and that is really from the hospital, so I think as long as we can keep good equipment and keep that good relationship, it's in the interest of the city to do so.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Barnes. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask the council to use their tablets to vote, please. Motion carries, thank you very much. Item six, review and action on a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County, along with the other communities of Utah County regarding the CDBG grants. The way that this works is Utah County is the agent, each of the cities, with the exception of Lehigh, Orem, and Provo, or those cities over 50,000, they have their own CDBG program, and Utah County runs it for the remainder of the cities, the other 19 cities in Utah County, cities or towns, I should say, and we must have an interlocal agreement with Utah County in order to apply, receive, or account for these funds from the Community Development Block grants. That's the reason for this before us, and it's a requirement, did it be updated on a yearly basis, and this is the update for the current year. Any questions on that?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the resolution entering to an interlocal agreement with Utah County along with other communities regarding Community Development Block grants.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion?
I had some discussion, Mayor. I'll give my usual spill on this. I, as you know, I voted against all the Community Development Block grants on constitutional basis. We each take an oath to uphold and defend and support the Constitution, I think that's important. The Constitution, the purpose of it was basically to limit government to only those things that it specifically authorized to do, and that enumeration of powers is found largely in Article 1, Section 8. And in Article 1, Section 8, and nowhere else in the Constitution, is there an authorization for the federal government to create the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which administers these CDBG grants, nor to fund local infrastructure needs like this. Our federal government was organized to provide national defense, to do foreign affairs, and this is way outside the scope of the purpose of the federal government, and it's not necessary. Local communities and states are able to fund their own local infrastructure needs, and so I'm very much opposed to this, and would urge my fellow council members to also consider their oaths to uphold the Constitution. I've asked before for a constitutional citation granting this authority, and I have not had a response to that yet, where someone has been able to cite wherein the Constitution the federal government's authorized to do this.
Well, I will respond, the Housing and Urban Development has certain guidelines that allows communities to rebuild certain neighborhoods if and when they meet a certain criteria of income, a low to moderate income family, and we've been able to go through, we have looked at our community and looked at our water lines that are over 100 years old, and found that in many neighborhoods, the medium income in those neighborhoods meet those HUDD, or Housing and Urban Development, guidelines, and so we have put in for those funds, and to date, we have been successful, and we are now on phase six of an 11-phase project to replace 100-year-old water lines that have lead joints and lead goosnecks, and we're trying to bring them to code as far as the diameter of the pipe, which allows greater for water flow, and then closeness, proximity of fire hydrants to the houses. And so we are now worked, we started first with Columbia Village and worked our way east, and we are now east of 100 East, and so we're working away, getting rid of fire hydrant power water lines that are ancient, and we feel comfortable as the mayor and the public works director in applying for these funds, we meet the qualifications, and the only thing I can say is if American Fork doesn't put in for them, somebody else will, and that money will go to some other community. Thank you very much.
Could I just have one follow-up comment on that, too? I think this is important. So there's, you know, hundreds of thousands of cities throughout our nation, and these grants are, you know, 100,000, 500,000, it depends on the project, but our federal government is over $10 trillion in debt, and so they, every year, they borrow about a trillion dollars. This year, maybe it'll be less than that, but it's a huge amount of money that they borrow because they're living beyond their means, and in my opinion, a vote for this is a vote to add to that debt, because we're basically asking for a handout from the federal government of money that they then have to go borrow, and again, that's my basis for this. As you know, Mayor, I'm not opposed to replacing the water lines, and we do the bulk of that through our own tax dollars that are collected, and I'm very supportive of that.
I'll correct you if I may, Councilman, we don't collect tax dollars to repair water lines, that's a enterprise fund, and we have built sufficient monies in the water bill that people pay every month to carry a portion of that. Even with CDBG, the city has to match, and every time we've got money, we've been successful because we've asked for 300,000, we put 350,000 of our own money out of that enterprise fund to go into that project, so we are qualifying and we are paying for it, not out of tax dollars, but out of utility fees, okay? I have a motion in a second, I would ask the council to please use your tablets to Motion passes, thank you. We have an item seven, consideration action entering to a closed session, discussed potential of the professional character of an individual and potential litigation. Is there a motion to move to closed session?
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton, seconded by Councilman Frost. I will ask you to put a vote on your tablets, please.
Question, please.
I'm sorry?
Just to voice, vote.
Voice, vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene downstairs for a closed session. At the conclusion of that meeting, we will go back to open session and conclude our meeting this evening. Thank you for your attendance this evening.